I would like for all of you to remain standing and think about our fellow service members that are serving overseas, protecting our life and liberty here in the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank God.
Welcome to the board meeting. At this time, I'd like to have a special presentation, and it has to deal with the Suffolk Police Department and a few police awards we are going to give out today.
Thank you, Mayor Markounis. I want to thank the village board and all of you for being here tonight, and letting us honor these officers, and with Detective Dolan, one of the administrators of the Suffolk Police Department, and obviously Mayor Markounis, and several of our great officers here in Suffolk. I would like to start this ceremony by thanking the mayor, village board, as well as the residents here in the Village of Suffolk for the continued support of our police department. In the month of May, actually starting today, National Police Week is celebrated throughout the United States, featuring ceremonies such as this, as well as memorials to honor officers who made the ultimate sacrifice by losing their lives in service to their communities. Tonight, we'll be honoring several Suffolk police officers who went the extra mile and provided exemplary service to our village during the course of their duties. Tonight, we have several lifesaving awards. We generally don't get this many in one year, but just the way the year felt, we did, and I want to credit all these officers, you're going to hear each one of these incidents, for their quick response times. We've always spoke about here in the village, response time is critical in an emergency, where seconds, not minutes, determine life or death. I'd like to start off the call up Sergeant Dave Tarantino of the Suffolk Police Department. Dave, please come up. Thank you, Dave. You stand right over there facing me. Thank you. On June 27, 2015, while off duty at an event in Airmont, Sergeant Dave Tarantino of our police department was notified that a woman was choking and could not breathe. He immediately assessed the situation and did determine she was choking and could not breathe or talk, at which time he performed the Heimlich maneuver, which successfully dislodged the object from her throat, and enabled her to start breathing immediately. EMS personnel and the Ramapo Police Department responded to the scene and treated her accordingly. Due to Sergeant Dave Tarantino's actions, this woman's life was literally saved. Congratulations, Dave, and William, after the Suffolk Police Department, we thank you for all of your efforts, Star Department, and the job well done. Job, Dave, well done, well done. Thank you. Thank you. I would now like to call up Sergeant Andrew Lachlan, Detective Mike Fennessey couldn't be with us tonight, Officer Lou Ventorini, and Officer Billy Somer. On March 5, 2015, at approximately 7:52 PM, Sergeant Lachlan, Detective Fennessey, and Officer Somer and Ventorini responded to a private residence here in the Village of Suffolk for a report of a 54-year-old female seizing and not breathing. Upon arrival, the officers observed the 80 party seated on the couch in an unconscious state. She was breathing inadequately and was moved to the floor to begin ventilation by way of BVM. While on the floor, the 80 party stopped breathing and wanted a cardiac arrest. The officers immediately began CPR and administered a shock from a defibrillator. After a period of time, the 80 party regained her heartbeat and began breathing on her own. The officers monitored her and ensured she had an open airway until the arrival of paramedics. Care was turned over to EMS personnel, and the officers on scene continued to go above and beyond to assist in any way possible, including patient care, and assuring a safe and expeditious trip to Good Samaritan Hospital. Upon arriving at the hospital, the officers were advised by both emergency room staff and the Rockland paramedics on the scene that if not for her actions, excuse me, that if not for the actions of the above-mentioned officers, the 80 party would not have survived. Congratulations to all of you, and a job well done, a quick response, you go on above and beyond. Job well done. On September 13, 2015, at approximately 9:07 PM, Officers Justine and DeLuca responded to a residential structure fire here in the Village of Suffolk. The officers responded within one minute, and upon arrival, officers found a heavy smoke condition and flames coming from the rear of the home. Officers Justine and DeLuca immediately entered the home to check for occupants. Officers found a 48-year-old male sleeping in the upstairs bedroom, which was engulfed by flames. Officers walked this male, who was unaware that his house was on fire, and escorted him outside to safety. This male had mistakenly advised officers that there may be additional people inside of the residence, and the officers again entered into a house full of flames and smoke in a very dangerous condition. Officers then turned the scene over to the Suffolk Fire Department after no more victims were found, and basically, in general, this person's life was saved by your actions running into a burning building. I have many times seen this resident since, the house is right on the corner on East Maple Avenue, and I continuously see him, and every time I see him, he mentions about the officers' actions of saving his life. He was sat asleep with flames around him. It is no doubt about in his mind that he not have made it out was it for the actions of Officer Justine, Officer DeLuca. Gentlemen, great job, excellent response, and tremendous bravery under stressful situations. Excellent job. Thank you. One second, let me get you your awards here. Thank you, ma'am. It's Craig and Jeff. Thank you, ma'am. This is for Rick and Andrew, and I got one more for Andrew after that. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to call up Sergeant Rick Marsh and Officer Andrew York. Let me get the date, I'm sorry. On October 26, 2015, Officers, excuse me, Sergeant Rick Marsh and Officer Andrew York responded to a residence for a report of a male unresponsive in a bathroom floor. The male was blocking the door, had collapsed in the bathroom, was blocking the door, and the family could not make entry. Officer York arrived on the scene first, was able to force the door open with the party behind it. Officer Marshon arrived, and they found the party to be in extreme distress. No pulse was found, party was not breathing. CPR was started, and a defibrillator was attached with no shock advised, which means there was no activity within the body at that time. These officers began CPR, usually using chest compressions and oxygen, and after a short time, with the assistance of EMS, a pulse was returned, and the party started breathing again. He was taken to Good Samaritan Hospital, with the officers escorting him all the way up, and he did survive once again, thanks to the actions of Sergeant Rick Marsh and Officer Andrew York, who, going through a situation with a party trapped behind the door and not able to open it, figured out a way to bring this party back to safety. So, Rick, Andrew, great job, well acted actions, nice job, you basically responsible for saving this man's life. Congratulations. I got one more reward for that. Officer Andrew York, please come up to the front as well. Officer Andrew York was one of the officers in Rockland County, was noted for his enforcement of drunk driving DWI offenses last month by the Rockland County Stop EWI Board and the Rockland County Executive. Andrew made numerous arrests over the last year, was one of the top officers in the county. Andrew, we thank you for your vehicle and traffic enforcement to keep our roads safe and to keep drunk drivers off the road, and to keep our pedestrians, our citizens, our residents, and anyone traveling through the Village of Suffolk safe. Great job, Andrew, and thank you for your efforts. You guys can stay, we'll get another picture up here. Thank you. Now, you want to put any pictures? We're going to take a quick picture, and we'll get that side.
I would like to thank the Suffolk Police Department for their great and heroic actions over the course of the year, and also, I would like to ask all of our residents to remember the police officers during National Police Month, and remember that they're always out there for us, putting their lives on their line and protecting our village and our community. So, thank you once again, Suffolk Police Department.
Thank you. And just one quick note, I want to thank the village board for all of your support, everybody up in this building, even Virginia, Kathy Tan, everybody up there helps us out, and we thank you for everything. You're welcome to join us, we have reception upstairs, we have a lot of desserts, coffee, cake, please come upstairs, everybody's more than welcome, we are one flock, we love to see up there. I'll be back down in a few moments, and thank you for everything and letting us have this honor. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we now like to speak, have Mr. Ori Locata come up. Mr. Ori Locata is the president of the Suffolk Chamber of Commerce and is seeking permission from the board for a street fair on September 18 of this year. Mr. Locata, great job on the previous street fair.
Thank you very much, thank you. We had a nice crew, we had great volunteers, and we appreciate all your help, and Charles, thank you very much, your crew, everybody did a great job, and just want to thank the Suffolk Police Department from the Chamber of Commerce, great effort and terrific. September 18, we'd like to have our second street fair.
Talk a little closer to the mic, please.
September 18, we'd like to have our second street fair.
So, you're seeking the approval from the board for the exact same street fair?
We may not do the classic car show, we just may maybe have some more arts and crafts there, possibly something that we haven't really finalized, but it probably will be pretty much the same 99% of the way.
Seeking approval for the beer and wine?
Beer and wine garden, same thing, same insurance, same everything. Be in the same place.
Okay, so that will be contingent upon all the insurance certificates needed?
Correct, just like last time, correct.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion to grant the Suffolk Chamber of Commerce the request for a street fair on September 18?
Yeah, motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Did you check with the police department yet? Have you spoken with the police department about this, in terms of coordinating it?
No, but I assume that it would be the same as last time.
Okay. So, as the mayor said, subject to the insurance certificates and also coordination with police department, DW, et cetera.
Subject to all approvals.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is the request for a zone change for 175 Lafayette Avenue. Do we have the applicant present? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, Paul Baum for the applicant, 175 Lafayette Avenue LLC. So, as the board's aware, we've had two meetings before the board for public comment, and at the last meeting, the board closed the public hearing and granted us our negative declaration pursuant to SECPRA. So, we're just here looking to advance the project, seeing if there's any other issues or questions that we can respond to of the village, and to try and move this project forward.
Okay. Go ahead. Yeah. Mr. Baum and I have spoken a number of times over the past week and a half, two weeks, with regard to this proposed zone change. I am of the opinion that the board should consider, if they're going to grant this, that a condition be imposed, that the applicant cannot get a waiver from the planning board for what's called money in lieu of land. Our present resolution, that's been on the books for a while, allows for the planning board to reduce the fees paid by giving credit for recreational facilities that are located on the property and are only to be used by the owners or renters, as the case may be with this property. And that is not, that runs contrary to New York State's intent under the relevant section of the law dealing with money in lieu of land. Money in lieu of land is supposed to be money that's set aside for the purposes of establishing a fund that can be used by the general public in the area near where the subdivision site plan, or in this case, the apartment building would be located. And the way that our resolution reads at the present time, and I'll mention that I would like for the board to consider changing that as well, even though the recreational facilities are not located for the benefit of the public at large, the way that the resolution reads, the planning board may waive a certain percentage of fees based on unit count, I believe. It could be bedrooms. But if, a zone change is a discretionary act by a legislative body, in this case, the village board. And certainly, if you're in agreement with my recommendation, we could have the local law drafted to make it a condition, or we could have the resolution of approval with a condition that the planning board does not have the authority to waive those money in lieu of land fees. So, at this point, a zone change is in the nature of a local law, and a local law has to be on the member's desk for at least seven days. You haven't seen anything, because I haven't been able to come up with an agreement with the applicant's attorney, so I have nothing to present to you, and you have nothing to vote on tonight.
Okay, with that being said, do we have any comments from the board?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Just with regard to Mr. Crashauer's comments, I mean, in 2013, the village board adopted this money in lieu of recreation law that he refers to, and under that law, you gave the planning board the opportunity to waive up to 25% of the required money in lieu of land. And the whole idea of money in lieu of land is, as you develop residential units and residential housing for the village, you want to develop recreational facilities so that these people will have places to go. So, usually, you take a fee, in your case, it would be $2,500 per unit, or $2,000 per unit, and that would go into a special trust fund, and the village could use that for recreational facilities. Because the demand imposed on the villagers' recreational facilities by this development, you want to get something out of it. The law allows us, or allows the planning board, to waive up to 25% of that if we supply our own onsite recreational facilities, which this project will do. So, the planning board, I think, is capable of making a determination as to what sort of facilities we're providing, whether or not they're adequate, and if they feel that should be an adjustment of the amount of money in lieu of recreation paid to the village, under this statute, they should be allowed to do it. This statute was obviously debated by the board at that time, and this was the resolution that they came to. If the board feels that maybe they want to revisit that issue and change the law, I have no objection to that. But as long as this law stays on the books, we should be permitted, just like any other applicant that comes before the village that wants to develop housing, to seek a waiver from the planning board, and leave it to the discretion of the planning board to waive or not waive any portion of that recreation fee. So, if the board wants to address the law and reconsider the law and change the law again, we have no objection to that. But as long as the law stays on the books, we believe we should have the ability to, you know, show to the planning board that we're providing recreational facilities, and that we may be entitled to a waiver of a portion of those fees. I don't think it right that you have this law on the books and then make a recommendation, you can't waive anything. So, we either follow the law, or we change the law, but we shouldn't ignore the law. That's my only point that I wanted to bring up.
Mr. Magrino is the attorney for the planning board. The most recent project that I'm aware of that came before the planning board was the Orange Avenue Development. Mr. Magrino, did the planning board waive recreation fees for that project based on the fact that the developer was going to have onsite recreational facilities for?
Excuse me. Good evening. There was some credit taken into account, there were a number of things that were a little different with the Orange Avenue project, because there had been discussion at this stage, at the zone change stage, of money that they would be providing to the village. So, the short answer to your question is, yes, it was taken into consideration, they did receive some credit. Off the top of my head, I don't recall what it was, but...
But wasn't that credit for the fact that they had original units?
Oh, absolutely, right.
They had nothing to do as...
The, I believe, the Orange Avenue project, the new project, had 90 units, 91 units, I believe, withdrawn, I'm sorry to say withdrawn. No, it wasn't necessarily on that basis, it was mostly on the basis of items that were, in all honesty, now I recall, on the, in the agenda, it was mostly on the basis of what had been provided onsite. That issue had not really come up, to be honest with you. So, it's really, there was, I'm not exactly sure what they had, again, you're catching me off guard, I forget exactly what it was, but there was some, there was some credit. But again, as we discussed, you know, as a condition of zone change, you know, it can be whatever the board decides, each project is unique.
Okay, and you're not aware of the planning board, since you've been representing it, waiving for any other project based on them providing onsite recreational facilities?
Just, you know, since December now.
Thank you.
I don't mean to interrupt you, Mr. Crashauer, but if the, you know, if the Orange Development Project went to the planning board, and the planning board had the discretion to waive, and they decided not to waive them based upon the recreational facilities that were being provided as part of the project, well, then the planning board exercised their discretion. All we're saying is, allow the planning board to exercise their discretion here, don't remove that discretion from them unless you want to change the law.
Well, okay, I don't want to have too much of a debate on this, but the bottom line is that a zone change is a discretionary act. Do we disagree with that, or are we agree with that?
No, we acknowledge that this board can say we don't want to entertain it, and we're out of here.
And I told you to look at the Orange, I want everyone to be treated equally, I told you to look at the Orange Avenue project to see what happened there.
And I filed a Freedom of Information Law request on Friday, right after we spoke, but I haven't received any information, specifically the minutes of that meeting where the board adopted this resolution. So, listen, if this board decides this law was not wise, this resolution was not wise, that we should not be giving credits to applicants for providing recreational facilities, then change the law. But as long as the law stays on the books, we should be treated equally and have the opportunity to go before the planning board and let the planning board exercise their discretion on it, just as the planning board exercises discretion on the Orange Avenue Project.
Okay.
So, if you want to change the law, change the law.
First of all, it's by resolution. That's how it was originally adopted. But let me ask the board members individually, do you want to continue to allow a credit for, or the potential for a credit for onsite recreational facilities that can't be used by the public in general? Or do you want it to be what it was intended to be by New York State, under the relevant section of the village law, to be towards future recreation needs of the Village of Suffolk, by, you know, residents in general? Because that's ultimately what this comes down to.
No, I understand that, but just keep in mind that onsite recreational facilities do meet, to a limited extent, some of the recreational needs of these residents, so we don't want to lose sight of that.
But for the record, didn't I ask you whether or not the Village of Chestnut Ridge, where you represent the planning board, has a similar local law?
I don't recall you asked me, but I do not believe they issue credits.
Well, the relevance of the law, as you stated, in New York State, is for the benefit of the Village of Suffolk residents and the community at large. Is that correct?
That's what the intent is.
Right.
I think this actually flies in the face, in my opinion, flies in the face of the intent of money in lieu of land.
Mr. Crashauer, I agree, it differs from the normal standard, but obviously, this was debated, this wasn't just a law that was... This wasn't just a law that was, or a resolution that was just adopted without any consideration. So, I think, at the very least, we should at least go back and see what issues were under consideration at the time when the Village Board decided to grant the ability of the Planning Board to waive a certain percentage.
Okay. What I'm trying to...
At least look at the reasoning behind it. And if you feel that reasoning doesn't hold today, then eliminate it. But if there is a point to it and after you look at it, you say, yeah, I understand their point, I see why they wanted to grant a reduction, and I'm in favor of it, then that's fine. So, you should at least look at the reasoning and either reject it or accept it.
Okay. What I am trying to do here is get a sense of the Board. We comply with the open meetings law. This is not something that we have spoken about. We are doing this now in public, which some municipalities don't do. So, that's what I'm trying to gather.
And I would only ask that you at least review the minutes of that meeting, rather, you know, to make a decision now without reviewing the minutes.
Let me step in here. You make a valid request. So, that's what I'm leaning towards, just a review.
Exactly.
And take another look at it and come back before the Board. That would be my objective. Board ma, any...
I'd have to agree with you. We haven't seen the minutes of that meeting, but given a couple of days, we can pull them out and look at them and see. And again, if it's warranted, fine, we'll go along with it. If we find that there's a flaw in it, then we'll deal with that. Fair enough.
Mr. Hagan?
I agree.
Ms. Hertzmann?
I agree.
I have a...
Okay. So, we'll have you come back before the Board in June?
That's fine.
Is that fair?
That's fair.
Okay. And we'll do our due diligence and do the review.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
And thank you, Board members.
On that note, I failed to set the meetings for the next workshop and the next Board meeting. So, the next workshop is Tuesday, May 31st at 7:00 PM, and the next Board meeting is Monday, June 6th at 7:30. Thank you. Okay. Next we have on the agenda for 7:35, a change to Section 26615G of the Village of Code, Village of Suffering Code regarding use of yards. Mr. Magrino.
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah. First, this procedurally, we're not going to be asking the Board to vote on this. This was circulated. We had to circulate it to County Planning as part of the general municipal law review. And timing-wise, the Board cannot vote on it tonight, so I just wanted to put that out there. This, Steve Connolly from the Building Department is here. This arose from many residents come in and, you know, may have a shed and want to add a pool, or have a pool and want to add a shed to their yard. The way the law is currently written, they have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals in that regard at this point, which can be kind of onerous if you just really want to add a shed to your yard when, you know, perhaps a building inspector, if everything else is in order, could give a building permit. So, that's the general background of this. I'll ask Mr. Connolly to step up and just discuss the details.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Village Board. As Mr. Magrino stated, it's just kind of a revision to the existing zoning code.
Speak closer.
The code allows for one accessory structure. This just kind of streamlines it. We've had a lot of residents come in, if they have a pool and they want to put up a shed, they can't without a variance. If they have a shed and they want to put in a pool, they can't without a variance. This just makes it easier, just, you know, eliminates the need for a variance just because you want to put a second accessory structure in your yard. We, you know, and also the way the ordinance reads, if it's a shed, it has to be less than 100 square feet. We'd like to change that to greater than 100 square feet, because if you go buy a shed, a 10 by 10 is a stand, you know, one of the standard-sized sheds. So, anything larger, smaller than that, I mean, if you buy a 10 by 10 shed now, you're in violation of the zoning ordinance, because the way it states, it has to be less than 100 square feet. So, we'd like to change that. So, a 10 by 10 is allowed.
Not more than 100 square feet. Okay.
Right.
I was looking at the revisions here, and I don't, it does not exceed 12 feet in median height.
Right. Originally, we had talked about allowing a 12 by 12 shed, 144 square feet. And we went with a 12 feet median height because we figured the bigger the shed, the more, higher the ridge line would be. So, we figured to accommodate that higher ridge line, we'd go with a 12. But with a 10 by 10 shed, if you have a 4-on-12 pitch for the roof line, it would be approximately, just a little bit less than 2 feet at the ridge. And so, if the wall height was 7 and 2, it would be 9. So, I mean, 10 feet would be probably sufficient.
So, we can make that adjustment?
Yes.
So, it doesn't reflect 12, we'll reduce it down to 10?
Right.
And the setback has been changed from 2/3 the height?
Yeah, it's just easier to figure. Rather than tell somebody, well, if you have a shed that's 8 feet high, you've got to be 2/3 of 8 or a little bit less than 6, whatever. We're just figuring 5 feet from the property line. It's just easier for everybody to understand.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions?
No.
No, the height is...
Just to be clear, this would not allow for two residential structures?
Absolutely.
Even a tiny home?
Right. Absolutely. I mean, if the zoning stands now, you can only have one primary structure on a lot.
But speaking to the sheds that will be able to have two accessory structures, but none of the same?
Yes.
Right. So, you only can have one shed with a pool. You can't have two sheds.
Two sheds, two pools, two, no, you can't have that. You could have a shed and a pool, a shed in the garage.
That has to be clear.
Right.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
One thing that the Board could do tonight is to declare themselves lead agency under SEQUA and also within that resolution, declare a type 2 action requiring no further environmental review.
So, do I have a motion from the Board to declare the Village Board the lead agency under SEQUA?
Reference to this.
Motion.
And to categorize it as a type 2 action requiring no further environmental review under SEQUA?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we'll await the changes for the local law. Okay. Thank you.
Do we just adjourn the public hearing to June 6th?
Yes.
For the vote.
Okay. So, we adjourn the public hearing to June 6th?
That's got to be by motion.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second? Continue.
To continue. Second the motion.
Okay.
What time?
All in favor?
You need a time.
Time?
Aye.
That's the first one. 7:35. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next on the agenda is the public hearing on the annual New York State DEC MS4 report. Mrs. Zawicki?
Good evening, Mayor and the Board. The MS4 is the Municipal Separate Storm Source System, which is a U.S. EPA program regulated by the New York State DEC. An annual report is submitted to the New York State DEC on June 1st of each year. The MS4 Stormwater Program has six elements called minimum control measures that result in reduction of pollutants discharged into water bodies. Those six elements are public education outreach, public participation and involvement, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction site stormwater runoff control, post-construction stormwater management, stormwater management for municipal operations. The Village of Suffering is a member of the Stormwater Consortium of Rockland County. The Stormwater Consortium has partnered with Cornell Cooperative Extension for Education and Outreach, requirements such as radio programs discussing various public service announcement topics and educational classes. Any questions?
Does anyone from the public have any questions regarding the MS4 report that was submitted?
Make a motion.
We have a resolution authorizing the Village Board to accept the New York State DEC Annual MS4 Report, whereas the Village of Suffering is required to file an annual New York State DEC MS4 Report, and whereas the report has been completed by the Director of Public Works, Mr. Zawicki, for the year ending March 2016. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Village Board of the Village of Suffering accepts the annual New York State DEC MS4 Report for the year ending March 2016. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept the MS4.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any, do I have discussion?
Mr. Zawicki, this resolution and the report will be sent to the DEC? How does that work? I think we have to publish it.
Just the annual report will be sent to the DEC.
And we put it on our website as well?
It's on the website, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay. Filming on me.
I have a public hearing regarding filming in the Village of Suffering.
This is another one where we sent it out to Rockland County Planning for a GML review. And I also understand that the Mayor met with a number of municipal leaders in Saratoga who provided him copies of their filming local laws. So, I will be looking at those as well to see whether or not we want to make changes to even what's being proposed right now. So, my recommendation is that we, that you make a motion to continue that public hearing, also to June 6, 2016, at 7:40 PM, so that we have time to both receive and review the GML, as well as time for me to look at the local laws that the Mayor brought back from the conference that he recently attended.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing on June 6th.
I'll second the motion.
So, we'll be reviewing the applications. I met with other leaders from around the state, and they have different types of applications and permit requirements for filming in, within their villages and cities. It was very interesting. We've been selected numerous times here in the Village of Suffering to do filming, and I think we need to strengthen our application and permitting as required by the village.
We actually don't even have a local law on it yet.
Hold on. Virginia's changing the tape. Please stand by. Is this good?
No.
Take this off now.
He told me I was...
Condition corrected.
He told me I was supposed to touch that.
Okay. So, we had a motion, then we had a second. All in favor on continuing the public hearing on 6/16, 16, 7:40 PM? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. We have a speaker here from Orange and Rockland on a proposed license agreement with ONR regarding the sparge wells along Pat Malone Drive. If you could, Mr. Magrino, I want to speak first? I'm sorry. Go ahead. Hold on. A little confusion.
I have to recuse myself.
Go ahead.
Due to a conflict of interest, and please note that I'm leaving the room.
Couldn't wait for him to leave, right?
Sorry about that.
Just kidding.
Do you have yours?
Yes. The records should reflect Mr. Crashauer was out of the room.
Mr. Crashauer is out of the room.
Yes. As the Ward's aware, several months ago, Orange and Rockland, or even before that, approached the village regarding a remediation that they were going to be doing on a property at 3 Pat Malone Drive here in the village. Pursuant to that, the village granted a license to ONR in furtherance of their work to go over certain village property. They approached me, I believe, last week sometime, that it's their intention to put on the property what are known as sparge wells for the purpose of what's called a contingency groundwater treatment plan. The wells are there that in the hopefully unlikely event that as a result of their remediation work at this property, the village ground wells are contaminated, these sparge wells, I understand, would help to treat the water and...
I think it sets up a barrier. We have a representative from ONR here that's going to go into detail on it?
If they like, yeah, they can do that. But if I can, when they come up, the purpose that they're here, all of the wells except are going to be on that property that is owned by them. There's one well that just based upon, you know, where it needs to be, happens to be just over their property line onto the right of way to Pat Malone Drive. So, they need a license just to put that one well there. So, that's the purpose of that. So, if you'd like to come up and just discuss exactly what the sparge wells are.
Can you, is this good? Can you hear me? Board, Mr. Magrino covered most of the issues that we're talking about. When Orange and Rockland, prior to us initiating the remediation down at the Suffering MGP site, we developed a groundwater monitoring plan where we would be monitoring the groundwater for the duration of the work and post-remediation to ensure that there were no impacts to the village wells. Within that plan, there was a contingency that should we see migration of contamination towards the wells, there were several treatment options that we could exercise. One of those is use of sparge wells, where we would inject air ozone into the groundwater to treat the water before any contamination reached the village wells. What we are doing is installing a line or a curtain of these wells around the entire site. All of these wells, with the exception of the one that we're here speaking about today, is on Orange and Rockland property or New Jersey Transit property. Because of all the gas mains and infrastructure that is along Pat Malone Drive in front of the gas regulator station, we cannot install one of these wells on our property, so we need to step over their, oh, step over the property line onto the village property. So, these wells will not be put in... So these wells will not be put into operation unless there's a problem, but what we are doing is proactively installing them so that in the event that we do see any impacts in groundwater, we would be in a position to react much quicker and be able to start treatment to prevent any impacts to the village wells.
Great. Anybody have any questions on the board?
Just, these wells will not have any impact on anything going on down there. Won't interfere with anything the village does, right Charles? Don't have any problem?
No, right now, these are literally, they're four, one-inch PVC pipes installed, and until such time as we would hook them up to a compressor to either inject air or ozone, there is nothing more than PVC pipe in the ground.
Did you say that they would be hooked up to a compressor if needed?
If needed, yes. That would be used, the compressor would be used to inject air or ozone through these injection points into the groundwater. But we're not anywhere near there. We're just essentially getting the wells in the ground. We started this in the middle of April, it's going to take us till probably early June to get them all in. What we didn't want to do was have a problem and have to react, you know, so we wanted to put the wells in the ground ahead of time in the event that we needed them.
Right, so we're prepared in the event of any migration of the contaminant, then we'd be able to protect our own wells and infrastructure?
Correct.
How many wells were there in total?
We are installing 38.
38?
38 sparge wells.
38, and one compressor can handle the capacity if they all needed to be initiated?
It would be highly unlikely that we would have contamination everywhere. What we don't know is where we might have a problem, so essentially we're encircling the whole site, so we would be prepared to react to wherever we may, might see a problem. What would happen is depending on what the extent of the problem was, you might need one or more setups for it to inject it. That design part of the treatment, it hasn't been done because we don't know, hopefully we're putting these in and we never need to use them, but if we did, then that design element would be, would be figured out by our engineers.
So are the compressors on site, I believe?
No, there's nothing, there's not going to be nothing on site but a well, but a well with four pieces of PVC pipe in it right now.
Okay.
If we had to have treatment, then we would have to bring a compressor on site to inject air. That would be, again, in the highly unlikely instance where we do see impact.
But it would make sense if that, we have the wells, 38 wells in place, that we should have a compressor in place?
During the time of the remediation, in case something did occur, that we then had a compressor on?
Well, we need to do the monitoring, and then we would need to determine what we would need to do. So in order to size what the treatment might be, we would need to really have a better handle on what the problem is.
Is that based on the different levels of possible contamination as we spoke about at 50, 75, or 100 feet?
It is dependent on both what contaminants might migrate. Again, we're not expecting any to migrate.
Right.
This is definitely, this is a belt and suspenders type of plan that we have in place, and then we wouldn't know at this point what depth we might see impact. So these injection points are at different depths, 25, 50, 75, and 100 feet, so that we're prepared to treat anywhere within the water column that we might see a problem. So there's a lot of elements that would still need to be finalized and designed should we find a problem. So the point of this is to essentially just get the hardware in the ground because it is a time-consuming process, and then should we see a problem, we would work with DEC and DOH and our engineers and come up with the exact engineering that we would need in order to institute the treatment.
Any other questions from the board?
Oh yeah, just to mention, we did have, we did have to get a permit from the Rockland County Department of Health to put these wells in, so they are, they are on board and aware.
If I could ask you again, why, why wouldn't it be cautionary practice when we talk about belts and suspenders, if you're going to drill wells into the ground, that you wouldn't have also on site the equipment needed to perform an emergency action if, if necessary?
Because at this point, we are not aware of any, of any problems, and we will be monitoring on a weekly basis. We would be able to bring equipment out there quickly if we needed to react. We're going to be monitoring several wells on a weekly basis, reporting them to the regulatory agencies, and then developing whatever treatment we might need. We could have a compressor sitting out there, I, I, I mean, it's certainly something we can go back and I can talk to the engineer about whether that makes sense to do, but at this point, again, this was proactive on our part, it wasn't required, you know, by the DEC or the Department of Health, we just want to be in a position where we can react quickly should there be a problem. At this point, you know, there was no plan to have a compressor on site, I can certainly discuss it with our engineer if the village feels that that's something they'd like us to look into.
Can we, can we get some options from the engineers on what type of treatments may be or might be needed in the event of movement and see what type of compressors or compressor that we need?
Well, we already know that air or ozone would be effective. We did a treatability study on the groundwater, and we've identified air and ozone as, as would be effective to inject. It's just a matter of, we'd have to go in one or two wells, but we would have to go in several wells, and that would probably affect the size of the compressor that you would, that you would use out there. You know, I can get some, you know, we can talk theoretically, if we saw this, then we would do that, but without...
I mean, how many types of different applications could be used with these wells? Are there numerous applications of how to pump air into them, or?
No, it's really just a matter of whether it would be a couple of wells or several.
So we need a compressor. We need a compressor. Bottom line is you need a compressor on the site to pump the air in, but depending on the size.
Correct.
Size of the compressor.
Correct.
Can we explore that?
Certainly.
If something did leak, you mentioned that it was only weekly monitoring, from the contaminant that's there, if something were to leak, what the spread rate is?
The migration rate that any of these contaminants would have would be on the order of years, not anything that's going to happen quickly, which is why, again, we're putting this line, we're putting this, you know, this line of wells in, which would be in a position to intercept any migration that might be coming towards the wells. Nothing is going to happen in an overnight, in a week, in a month, you know, timeframe.
Okay.
Okay.
And again, I guess I just want to emphasize, we do not anticipate there being, you know, being a problem out here. This is just really in, in the interest of, you know, being very, very cautious and aware that there is water supply down gradient of the site.
Okay, great. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Do you have a question? Sure.
Michael Curley, 84, Orange, Village of Suffolk, New York. I guess, as you mentioned, I was very concerned with the, the weekly testing, okay? As we know, what happened with water in Flint, Michigan, and other places throughout the country, it's, it's dangerous things going on right now, okay? And I don't, I don't think weekly testing should even be an option. I think it should be daily, even hourly, okay? You shouldn't let that even come close to happening. I don't, unless we see a specific report showing about the migration, now I trust the confidence of, of the attorney representative, Mr. Magrino, very well, but to even take a chance with our water supply and that, okay? Without, I happen to have a, a good relationship with Orange and Rockland, I've been in litigation with them. I've been in front of the Public Service Commission with them many times, and I've won every hearing with them, all right? So I have a, have a understanding of how things may work or not work, but to just leave this go so easily, okay? And I appreciate the questions here, but this is a, whether, whether they teach us to qualify one of our employees, or they pay for an employee to stand there and monitor, okay? That's too dangerous to sit back and wait, okay? Now they say, oh, it could, but it could happen like that, anything could happen in a minute, we all know that, okay? Just like you want the compressor there, which, which, which I agree. But I think somebody monitoring and checking is, is virtue, it'd be, whatever, irresponsible if we didn't, and we can't, and, and the monitors should not just be them. The monitors should be an outside person that they pay for, or however it's paid for, and we hire, right? That we can trust, okay? But without looking at a report of showing the migrant, how, to just accept this would be foolish and reckless. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Orange and Rockland has been monitoring the groundwater down at that site since 1999. We have done an enormous amount of sampling out there, and we continue, we continue to sample with the contaminants in the ground that have been there since, I mean, the plant operated in 1903 to 1935, and the materials have been sitting there. There are, there have been no impacts to the village wells. The DEC and the Department of Health asked us to step up the monitoring while we were doing our remediation, just because there was a remote chance that the activities that we were conducting to remove the contamination might cause some migration of contaminants. However, the migration rate of these contaminants and the low levels that are there are not something that, as I was responding earlier, that are going to migrate to the wells with any kind of rapid rate of speed. The plan, the monitoring plan that we have in place has been reviewed and developed in conjunction with the DEC, the State Department of Health, and the Rockland County Department of Health. The results that we will get from the sampling will be provided to all of those agencies as they're, as they're being collected. So I, I want to assure everyone that we are very cognizant of the sensitivity of the wells, but it is not, you know, we are not just, you know, trying to skirt around this issue. We have been sampling, there have been no impacts. The remediation that we're implementing is excavation and institute solidification, which should not cause any migration of a contaminant. So all of these actions that we're taking are in the interest of being proactive and ensuring that we don't have the type of issues that you raised, that you raised, that obviously everyone is concerned about.
Great, thank you very much.
I think this is something the mayor and I discussed at their original meeting. Are we going to, as a village, get copies of these weekly reports? I think it'd be a good idea.
We'll take care of that, we'll receive it. Can you make that a point to receive the, send the weekly reports to me, please? Thank you.
I defer to Mr. Zawicki, I believe you've been getting them though.
I'm sorry?
Are you getting them at this point, or not yet?
I, I haven't been getting anything since they started work. Those monitoring wells have been placed for a number of years.
Okay, all right, okay. And just with respect to the issue that's before the board tonight, it's just the one, just granting the light, I mean, they, they certainly can go ahead and put in 37 other wells without the board doing anything, this is just a matter of giving them permission to do that one in, in the right-of-way. But many of the issues that Mr. Curley brought up had been addressed, and I can, you know, discuss it with you afterwards, when we had the initial license agreement and, and agreements and assurances that are in writing with ONR in terms of, in, hopefully the unlikely event of anything occurring, you know, remedial activities that they're required to take with, you know, respect to the DEC, and also with respect to the village in terms of the wells, so...
Yes. Okay.
I have a resolution, I don't know if you want me to briefly go through it?
Yes, please present the resolution.
I'll go through it briefly, just basically, whereas pursuant to our previous resolution, the village agreed to grant a temporary license to Orange and Rockland for permission to access the village-owned commuter parking lot located adjacent to Pat Malone Drive in furtherance of its remedial activities and as outlined in the New York State DEC March 2014 Record of Decision, and DEC approved remedial design report dated August 13, 2015, and in accordance with the requirements of a Speedies, S-P-D-E-S, permit equivalent issued by the New York State DEC related thereto, and approved remedial design report dated August 13, 2015, for remediation of the former Suffolk manufactured gas plant located 3 Pat Malone Drive, both of which are incorporated by reference. Whereas Orange and Rockland Utilities has now requested that the village grant a further license for the right to use a specific portion of Pat Malone Drive for the purpose of, A, installing a groundwater sparge well identified as well SW08 on, and B, if required by New York State DEC and under the DEC-approved groundwater monitoring plan during remedial construction dated February 2016, operate well SW08 on the property. Whereas the village board determines that the granting of the proposed license is desirable for the good government of the village, the protection of its property, the safety, health, comfort, and general welfare of its inhabitants, and the protection of their property and protection of public works, and that the installation of the sparge well and furtherance of the remediation located 3 Pat Malone Drive will provide for groundwater treatment in the event there is contamination at the site, and thus is desirable for the village and, and to the health, safety, and welfare of its residents. And whereas the proposed license agreement has been reviewed and approved by the Village of Suffolk Department of Public Works and the Village Attorney's Office, now be it resolved that the mayor or his designees authorized to grant a temporary license in a form approved by the Village Department Works of Public Works and the Village Attorney's Office with the conditions referenced above to Orange and Rockland Utilities to permit them to locate, install, maintain, and operate a sparge well on Pat Malone Drive pursuant to a written license agreement to be executed by the parties in accordance with the permits issued by the Rockland County Department of Health and the requirements of a Speedies permit equivalent issued by the New York State DEC. Be it further resolved, the mayor's designees authorized to execute said license, and there's one extra, be it further resolved, which we're going to take out. And I'd ask that that motion be moved if deemed appropriate by the village board.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to move it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, had that one other item, the add-on?
Hold on, let's see. What was the second item?
To set the public hearing on...
27 Hillside?
Yes, it's a public, a public hearing for code enforcement pursuant to Village of Suffolk Code 205-6 with respect to 27 Hillside Avenue. Just ask that a public hearing be set for June 6, 2016, and we'll be providing paperwork in support of that prior to the meeting.
What time, Mayor?
7:45 on June 6, we'll set a public hearing in regards to 27 Hillside?
Right, code, and code enforcement at that location, violation of village code.
Violation of code enforcement?
Violation of the code.
Violation of the code. Do I have a motion?
Motion to move it.
Do I have a second?
A second, yes.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
June 6, 16, 7:45. Thank you. Next up, we'll have an update of our facade program that is currently underway in the Village of Suffolk by Ms. Corinne Koffler.
Good evening. I have an update on the facade program, which we know has been underway for a number of years, and is funded by a community development block grant that we received from the county, which is ultimately HUD funding. I had provided a couple of documents to the board at the workshop that included a status of how the funds have been spent, before and after pictures of all the projects that we've completed, and the balance of funding that we have available at this time, and what we anticipate doing with the, you know, remaining funds. So you know, we have completed a total of six buildings, 11, or actually 12 storefronts, because some of the buildings had more than one storefront in them, and we have one currently under construction, which is the Royalty's 29 Lafayette Avenue, and should be done hopefully by the end of the month, basically all that's left in the painting.
Yeah, it's looking good.
So, looks good, we're getting there. If it had rained for a week and a half straight, we probably would be done, so... If it had rained for a week and a half straight, we probably would be done, so. That being said, we have approximately $70,000 to $75,000 left in grant funding. The program guidelines limit the amount of funding, an owner can get to $45,000 with another $5,000 coming from the owner, because the owner puts in 10%. So, that would leave us enough money to do one project at a maximum of the $45,000, and then leave a small amount of money left to do a smaller-scale project at about, you know, $30,000 or so. So, ultimately, we have a project that's in the pipeline that we're looking at getting a cost estimate on and, you know, a preliminary design work to see what the cost of that project would be, and from there, we can make a determination as to how we're going to proceed. There could be the possibility that that project, the cost estimate would exceed the $50,000 program maximum that we currently allow for, and then we can make a determination, you know, how we wanted to proceed with, you know, addressing that at the time, so.
Great.
And that's scheduled, the architect is meeting with the owner at that project on Thursday, so we should have an estimate, hopefully within like a week, and we can make a decision about...
And we'll touch base after that.
What?
We'll touch base after that.
Yeah, yeah. We'll make, yeah, we'll touch base on how we're gonna, you know, utilize the balance of the funds at this point, so.
Does anybody from the board have any questions?
I did wanna ask, I did, you know, I had given you guys the, the slides with the before and after pictures, it would be at the discretion of the board if you wanted them to be posted to the village website so that people could see them if you wanted to.
Good idea, will do, okay.
Only if you double check, because one of the after pictures was a before.
Okay, okay. Check. We'll do.
Want it to look good.
All right.
Okay, great, thank you very much, Corinne.
You're welcome.
Okay, next we have the Fire Department Chief John Salmon for an update, please.
Good evening, Mayor, board members.
Good evening.
I just have a couple of things, we have a new member for the Suffolk Hook and Ladder, his name is Manuel Gutierrez, needs to be put on the village insurance.
Okay, so do we have a motion to accept Manuel Gutierrez as a new member in the Hook and Ladder? He's a junior or a...
No, he's over 18.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right.
And also, the Suffolk Hook and Ladder is, would like to have a dedication for the rescue truck on June 4th, it's a Saturday.
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion to have the dedication for Hook and Ladder, 19 EQ, dedication on June 4th. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, third.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Culture and Recreation, Ms. Kathy Mills.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, village board. A few things that we have coming up, this Thursday, May 12, will be the Recreation Board Meeting upstairs in the community room at 7:00 PM. The Nutrition Evening Workshop, the next one we have is Wednesday, May 18, starting at 7:00 PM in the community room. We have Lead on May 20, that's a Friday night, at 8 o'clock to 11 o'clock in the community center. We have the Memorial Day Parade with the, with the Legion, American Legion, coming up on Monday, May 30, and that will be kicking off at 11:00 AM, starting from Lot A, and it'll be coming up to the Soldiers Monument. Suffolk Pool, the registration, believe it or not, is gonna be starting soon, June 13, which is a Monday, will be the first day. We have a week of registration, so hopefully people will take advantage of that first week. So, we have it from Monday to Saturday, starting June 13, and then the pool will be opening on Saturday, June 25, for the summer. So, that's, those are the upcoming events that we have. And then I'd like to talk about a few things, I'll go to the bottom one first, we have a surplus printer in Recreation that we'd like to discard if we can just approve that this evening.
Can we put it on auctions.com?
Try.
We've been putting everything on there, well.
What you would need is a motion to declare a surplus.
Okay. Do we have a motion to declare the recreational printer surplus?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Surplus.
Thank you very much. Now, the next item I'd like to discuss is the lifeguards for the 2016 summer season, so I'm not sure how I should do this, should I just mention names and see if I can approve those names so we can send letters out?
So, you're looking for approval for all of the hires?
Correct, we interviewed lifeguards and I'd like to send a letter out accepting their, accepting them for positions for the summer.
So, Kat, did you interview, or your staff interviewed everybody, and it's 18 people, I think, on?
Yes, we did, myself and Luciacio in Recreation interviewed all of the people that are on this list, and they all seemed very good, we're excited to have them here for the summer.
Okay, you could, you could request the 18 names listed, you don't have to go through each name.
I'm sorry, just say...
No, you, just request the, now, how are you gonna request it?
That works for me. Can I please request the 18 names that are listed in this packet to be accepted for the 2016 season?
Right, exactly. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we get dicey here. Okay, Department of Public Works, Mr. Zawicki.
Evening, Mayor and the board. Just before you begin, Table B.
We're going to Table B, Item B. Do you have the agenda?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, yes. You wanna address that one first, is that what you said?
No, we're gonna table it, oh, we need to review it.
Okay.
Are you tabling now?
Yeah, B.
Okay.
All right, first item is a training item, this is a training request for Mr. Nick Fabricatore. Ms. Fabricatore is the Assistant Chief Operator at the wastewater treatment plant, and he's requested training as required by the New York State DEC, as required for his 3A wastewater operator's license, and I believe you have a resolution prepared for them?
Yes, we do. So, I have a resolution in front of me authorizing Nick Fabricatore to attend training course offered, offering six contact hours towards his New York State DEC 3A wastewater operator's license. Do I have a motion? Well, hold on, it's whereas Nick Fabricatore is requesting authorization to attend the training course, offering six contact hours towards his 3A wastewater operator's license at Rutgers Cooperative Extension in New Brunswick on June 22, 2016, at a cost of $280, and reimbursement for his tolls and gas upon submission of a voucher with supporting documentation to the village clerk. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Well, discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye, motion passes.
Okay. I have some bid approvals that I'd like to see if we can get approved. First one is the Phase 1 sanitary sewer abatement, James Street sanitary sewer replacement, and that bid is in the amount of $303,500.
Okay, so I have the resolution authorizing the acceptance of the low bid for the Phase 1 sanitary sewer abatement, James Street sanitary replacement.
Motion.
Second.
Have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Okay, the next bid approval request is for the other section of this Phase 1 sanitary sewer abatement, it's the cast-and-place liner, and that low bid is in the amount of $268,762.50.
So, we have a resolution here authorizing the acceptance of the low bid for Phase 1 sanitary sewer abatement cast-and-place liner. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we know whether or not the bonding went through on these things?
Everything, my understanding is everything has been submitted to the EFC, there was the, the shipo was the one last item that we did send in, so everything, again, it's my understanding, everything has been submitted to the EFC.
And it was, the shipo was returned? We, they sent us a letter?
Yeah, yes, yes, that was completed, that's right.
Okay.
Because what I built into this is that this is all subject to the bonding actually coming through.
Good idea.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Okay, the next one is for Water Department Chemicals, liquid sodium, and the unit cost is $1.75 per gallon.
Motion.
That's a resolution authorizing the acceptance of the low bid for Water Department Chemical Liquid Sodium. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just note that the end date is May 31, 2017.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Okay, my last request is for membership of the Stormwater Consortium of Rockland County, $1,000.
Hold on. Okay, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the Stormwater Consortium of Rockland County Cornell Cooperative Extension Program Agreement, annual membership, $1,000.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open it up to audience participation, do I have anyone from the audience that would like to speak? Please state your name and address.
Joe Marigolino, 65 Wayne Avenue. I have a couple of things to talk about, about Wayne Avenue. The Department of Public Works, they did a very good job next door to my, at my neighbor's house, she's been sick with cancer, she wasn't able to come out tonight. They took down a tree months ago. As a request from her, could they please come out and stump grind the tree that they removed?
And what number?
67 Wayne Avenue.
At 67 Wayne?
Yes. I would like to thank also the Department of Public Works, they've been doing a very nice job, they've been cleaning up the weeds that seem to grow up across the street from my house, the wing wall of the thruway authority, and on Wayne, the sidewalk also, because last year the weeds were this high and about an inch thick, so, thank you for that.
Great, thank you.
I wanted to know if they could add a herbicide, because it always seems to come on back, if they could just spray some herbicide over there across the street from my house at 65?
Is that possible, Mr. Zawicki, to spray some, spray some herbicide over there on Wayne Avenue?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, back to Wayne Avenue and the DOT, were you able to discuss with the Department of Transportation about the changes on Wayne Avenue that were discussed between you and I? From Pavilion Road going westbound, there was two lanes. In the future, when they go to repave Wayne Avenue, are they gonna make that a single lane? And it would definitely discourage people from cutting each other off and speeding in that vicinity, they're flying over there, believe me.
Right, we did discuss it, I did reach out to the DOT, we did request the speed reduction, it was denied.
That's okay with the speed, no, the speed, the speed, they're gonna redesign, they're gonna ignore it, I'm just, I'm really...
The pavement markings and the lane change, the lane structure. We are currently still discussing that, and we're discussing the overall repaving of Wayne Avenue and remarking, so I don't have an answer for you tonight.
Okay, yeah, that, that double lane is horrible, it's horrible. They think it's, they think they're coming on Queens Boulevard or something, and then all of a sudden they're cutting each other off, it's continuing, somebody's gonna get killed. We don't wanna witness that, because last year at this time, a lady got struck and eventually died. Sidewalks on Wayne Avenue, I think this was the month that we were supposed to find out whether or not the CHIPS program, or from the federal government, if we were gonna get sidewalks on the north side of the street.
We actually submitted for a grant, we didn't receive word back from the grant for that, for that project, for the sidewalks on the north side of Wayne Avenue.
Okay, so we're still waiting?
Yes.
Okay, hopefully that gets done, I really, you know, you've seen it.
Yes.
Okay. On the corner of Washington Avenue and Lafayette Avenue, when you're going southbound on Washington Avenue, a few months back, I asked if the DOT could put a delayed green light there. I think in the past, I watched the YouTube, I wasn't here for a couple of months, and I think you said you were discussing it with the DOT to see if they could put a delayed green light, especially going southbound, because the traffic builds up 10, 12 cars, and you're there for five, six, 10 minutes, and if they could have that delayed green go, and you could at least alleviate some of that traffic in that vicinity, and they can move on, and then the green light hits, and then everybody else could basically move along, because these times you're there, especially at the 4 o'clock hour, you're there for quite a while, and it gets, nobody's moving anywhere.
Yeah, you're, we've received numerous complaints about that, we did reach out to the DOT, and they are still evaluating it or looking at it, trustee Joe Russo has been in, in contact with them, I'll provide you with an update.
Yeah, that'd be nice, I mean, that's another nutty area, you know, it's really basically certain times, you know, it's not continual, but when it is there, especially with the kids going to CCD like today, 4 o'clock, or whatever, 4:30.
Understood.
It's crazy. Okay, so, I know, I keep seeing message boards out on the road about paving, one day it's May 2nd, then it's May 9th, then it's May 16th, when are they gonna start repaving anywhere in this village?
That's the state in New York, now, you know, it all, it all depends on when they finish the gas main replacement.
Yeah, I've seen that on one.
You know, we're also doing the curbs and sidewalks on Orange, on the gas main, they still, they're still doing tie-ins, they still have to go up Chestnut, they still have to go down and up Orange.
Okay.
I believe they're finished on Lafayette, I don't know if you can add to that, Charles, did we have any timeframe on repaving?
Well, I spoke to O and R today regards their work on Orange Avenue, and they're just, they've run into delay because they're running to rock, and they have to, they have to essentially...
I saw them out there with the B...
Yeah, the ramhoe.
The ram, right.
Yeah, so they're, they're jacking that rock out. We, and just, you know, in trying to, trying to coordinate with our curb and, the curb and sidewalk contractor, we're continuing to try to do that, and I think we're gonna be successful in doing that. But in terms of their completion of the gas main, it looks like they're probably a week and a half or so away from finishing their work, and then subsequent to their, completing their work, then the DOT will come in. But I believe, is my understanding, they're gonna be starting up by the hospital and working down into, you know, into the business district and into Lafayette. As you know, they're, they're starting on Orange Avenue, they're starting at the Jersey Line, and they're going into Hillburn nearby the old Dog Food Factory.
Right.
So, that, that's the one strip there on Orange Avenue, and then into Hillburn, and then continuing up Lafayette all the way to where they left off a couple of years ago by the hospital. So, it sounds like they're most likely, you know, a week and a half or two weeks away. Now, you saw a sign saying that, nice, and that's, and, you know, that's pretty typical for the DOT, you know, they, they keep on changing those dates, but I think the 16th might be a fairly solid date, but what they have to do, they need to come in, and they're gonna make some repairs in the road, and that's their first order business, then they're gonna come in, they're gonna mill, and then they're gonna pave, so I would say that we're gonna be into June before it's completed.
Okay. You know what, I was thinking that we should reach out to Norfolk Southern and make sure that they're still on board with... make sure that they're still on board with the, the crossing over there on, on Wayne and Orange.
Yeah, the last meeting we had, that they were, but the representative from the railroad wasn't actually at the meeting.
Right.
Someone had talked to them prior to the meeting. So it sounds like, I'll see if I get an update from them.
Okay, great, thank you.
Forgive me, I forgot to mention something about Wayne Avenue also that we discussed. Crosswalks, signage saying pedestrian crossing also. Again, when the road can be completed, or hopefully, like I said, when you get rid of that two lane underneath, two lanes underneath the three-way overpass, and you get rid of that transition sign and put a pedestrian crossing and crosswalks. We need these things to be illuminated or something, you know, because we have no crosswalks either by Wayne Avenue. The other thing is, when they go to pave the road, the pitch is so high sometimes, especially near my neighbors. And he lives at 67 Wayne, I live at 65 Wayne. Can you, hold on, Joe? Oh, sorry. Sixty. Knock that button.
Hold on. Okay.
Good, thank you.
Just hold a minute. Okay.
He lives at 63 Wayne Avenue, 65 Wayne. It seems like the way the road is crowned, we get an awful lot of, the curbing itself is, I took a measurement, I know it's a little picky. Across the street from my house is three inches high. On our side of the street, it's like an inch, it's a half inch, an inch and a half, highest two inches. And I think when the water comes, it goes towards 75 Lafayette, I'm sorry, Wayne Avenue, towards the two-way overpass. That's a main storm drain over there. And what occurs is, the water, it goes on top of our sidewalks, you know, so when these guys go to do their job, hopefully, they don't overcrowd this road, if they mill it down, you know, and maybe, you know, in front of my driveway, I share a driveway with 67 Wayne, and it's, it's like a pond, you know, it just shouldn't be like that. You know, I think the, the curbing has something to do with that, get that water to flow towards where it got to go without encroaching it onto the sidewalk, you know. So everything affects everything, and it could damage the sidewalk in the future anyway. So I, you know, that's, it's something with the DOT, whenever they-
Is that something that we'd be able to look into, Charles, when they, when they mill 202 and repave?
Well, we can, as we did on Orange Avenue, we discussed our problems in terms of drainage, and they did accommodate enough of this storm, we even said that there are any, like, maybe one day, maybe more specific, but you see it happen.
Oh, yeah, it happens a lot, you know, because like I said, it just seems like the crown of the road comes a lot on the south side of the street. On the other side of the street, there's a, there's an apartment complex, and their drain, many a time that the owner of that property does not clean out his drain, and I think the chief property scene turns into Lake Antrim over there too, you know, but he doesn't take care of clearing out that drain. It's full of leaves, debris, whatever. Finally, when he does do it, I mean, it's next to the fire hydrant chief, right? It's unbelievable. Cars come in, it looks like they've got a wick, you know, but it's, it's a drain there. The other drain is clear, but it's the way the water, it's just so crowned over to our side of the street. It just, it goes out into almost one quarter into the road, you know, so if they can do this properly, I think-
No, not Berkeley.
Yeah.
Are you talking about apartments on, on the north side of Wayne Avenue?
Yes.
Okay.
50 Wayne Avenue.
Right. The ones up on the hill?
Yes.
Okay.
Their drain, they have one on the bottom of their driveway.
So it's their drain, is it?
Well, it's, it's on village property, but I, I look at it like they clear it, they should be a little, I, I, I think it's village property. It's really, if there was a sidewalk there, I'd say it's in the middle of a sidewalk.
So it's 50, all right, we'll take a look at that.
Yeah, that one, you know, he does shovel it and clean it, or one of the PPW guys might have been out there because they were cleaning it up, and I saw it clear the other day.
Would that be our drain, Charles, that 50, outside of 50 Wayne, that apartment complex on the north side?
I was thinking of dealing with Brentway, however, if something's involved with that, they don't need the ownership of the roadway.
Right.
So anything outside of Brentway, unfortunately, having things that, if something's-
You could, okay, please take a look at that.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome, thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak?
My name is John Drew. I'm at 63 Wayne Avenue. In regards to what Joe was talking about, about Wayne Avenue and the puddling in front of the aprons of our driveways, it only occurred after the last paving of Wayne Avenue by the DOT, which is over ten years ago. From 59 on towards the three-way, they did a double layment, layer there. They did a undercoat from 59 on, and then the top coat. Ever since they did that, our curbs became very low, and we have that pounding issue in our aprons. So it was the DOT who originally caused the problem, because prior to that, the water would flow, and we had a standard four to six inch curb. I just wanted to add that into what Joe said.
All right, thank you.
Would it be possible, with the next rain, which I'm sure will be in a couple of days, to take some photos and send it? Have, have you ever supplied photographs?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
All righty, thank you.
Good evening, Board. Paul Gerard, Two Cross Street.
Good evening.
First of all, regarding 175 Lafayette, I want to thank Mr. Kraschaw for, you know, challenging, you know, really expressing your interpretation of the spirit of the law as far as the, the money in lieu of property.
Thank you.
And while I don't believe, you know, if we do have a law in the books that, that says something, I think that's one thing we should abide by that, but obviously, if you feel like your interpretation is that the spirit of the law is for something different, then, you know, we should definitely defend that. And, you know, I think in, in the, with the financial state of this village, we shouldn't be, we should be looking at every opportunity to draw revenues from sources other than from the residents, because, you know, the resident tax bill is the plug for, for all these, you know, these budgets that, you know, get reviewed and passed year over year. So I, and if the planning board, if it's their right to make a decision, but the planning board needs some legal interpretation of the law, then, or in, or the spirit of the law, then by all means, I think it's appropriate for you to go.
Yeah, I don't know if you heard it, but their attorney represents the planning board in Chestnut Ridge, and they don't have this law that we have here. They get all the money and move land.
Yeah.
So I thought that was a little ironic that where he represents, they get all the money, but he's asking us to waive it.
Okay, well-
And that's on the planning board too. That's, the, the planning board may grant that waiver. They don't necessarily have to.
Right. Okay, but I, you know, like I said, I think, I, you know, I think the, the spirit of the law is an important distinction, and like I said, we're, you know, we're still in financial dire straits here. We've still got a, a long-term issue that we got to dig out, and every opportunity we have of, of other sources of revenue, we, we need to strongly look at those and, and keep those intact for ourselves. The other issue with this property, I think a lot of residents have brought up, is the traffic concern of where that entrance and exit is going to be, and where it's at the bottom of that, that, that steep decline coming down from, you know, where the Salvation Army is down there. And I don't know if there's been any opinions drawn from the board, or even from the chief in terms of concerns about that, because like I said, a lot of residents have brought that up, but I don't know if, if, if that's a concern of the board in terms of passing this project. I mean, there were other suggestions of, of other ways of entering.
They have expressed, the board members have expressed concerns over the, the traffic study, yes.
And are we going to improve, be improving, are they going to be improving the visibility on that, or that?
Yes.
So that wall is going to be-
Yeah, they're bringing the wall down, and they're moving it back, and they're increasing the visibility. I don't have it in front of me, but it might, whatever distance, the site distance may be increased a hundred feet, something along those lines.
Yeah, the sight lines were vastly improved.
Okay. All right, that's good, thank you.
But it is still a concern because of Oakdale Manor having to make their turns.
Right, right.
It is.
And when it comes, if, I should say, if it comes down to them being granted the zone change, they have to go to the planning board, they also have to go to the zoning board, and the site-specific aspects have not yet been addressed. That's where all of these things and more will be addressed, lighting and, you know, architecture and plantings and lots of other, you know, site-specific features. This is just dealing with the legislation, whether they're going to be granted it.
Okay. Different topic, the sidewalk project on Orange. I see that that's extended past Oliver, which was the initial, original plan, right? And I'm assuming the cost of that project is probably higher, unless we-
Yes.
We did better. I was just curious, what is the process for approving those addition? I mean, I'm not saying I'm opposed to that. I mean, it looks great, and it probably is better to do it now while you're doing the rest of the project, but I was just curious, what's the process for approving those additional funds?
He wants to know the process.
Yep. I actually had to call up NICOM on this, New York Conference of Mayors, to, based on the fact that at the time, there wasn't enough time to go out to competitive bid. It created an emergency situation, which is an exception under Section 103 of the general municipal law. And the bidder who already won the bid was granted an extension at the same exact linear foot price that was competitively bid. So there was an emergency declaration. It had, at the time, if it hadn't been done that way, you know, as far as everyone knew, the state was coming in on May 2nd, and if they had paved, it would have eliminated the existing sidewalks, and there wouldn't have been, which are already like two inches.
The existing curbs.
The existing curbs. And it would have created a hazard, and it would have prevented the ability to put in the curbs and sidewalks and walkways in the future.
Without damaging the newly repaved road. So in order to keep the curb and prevent flooding, and to replace the curb without destroying the newly repaved, remilled, remilled and repaved road, we opted to replace the curbs before they paved.
Right.
Because when they were, when they, when they started to pull the curbs out, the curbs, the existing curbs were connected to the road, the concrete road, which had a swell built into them for drainage. Is that correct, a swell?
It was actually a carob and a gutter.
A carob and a gutter of concrete, and that, when they ripped it out, they needed to rip out at least two feet into the roadbed. So, to the board, it made sense to go out and seek this relief before they paved the road to put in new curbs.
Okay. I just know that when we approved the project initially, we had to have a public hearing, and we had CHIPS money and all that.
Right.
But, you know, it was a pretty contentious debate about whether or not to do it, but then when we're expanding the project, there's no additional, whether it's a hearing or-
There was a, there was a special meeting, yes, but no public hearing.
Not a public hearing?
No.
Okay.
And I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that there was still enough money in the CHIPS funding to pay for this?
Yes, it's being funded through CHIPS money.
Okay. So, all right, so I guess we got additional CHIPS money because I-
Yes, we did.
We got additional CHIPS money that allowed us to pay for that project and still have a remaining CHIPS balance, plus pay for the additional funds that were needed to balance out the grant on the original amount. So the original up to Oliver, and then now down to the corner of Lafayette, they're basically the same amount of money, and we had the opportunity to extend the current project and not have to cease bid and start again.
I, I mean, your line of thinking seems to make sense, especially when you found out how much damage it was going to cost. I'm just, I'm puzzled by the fact that we had to go through this process to get it approved for a certain amount, and the fact that it's been increased, or we used other CHIPS funds, that we didn't have to go through a similar process.
Again, that's because it was let out as an emergency contract.
It was what?
It was let out as an emergency contract. We only had X amount of days before DOT was coming in to repave, and had we put it out to bid DOT on that time of that issue, the DOT would have been repaving while we were trying to rip up the sidewalks. So consequently, we put it out to an emergency bid, emergency contract, and that's why there was no public hearing.
It's Section 103D of the general municipal law.
Okay. All right. I, I know last time, there were, you know, when we had the, the hearing for the, for the budget, a lot of questions, a lot of back and forth. I appreciate you responding to me, Mr. Mayor, on some of the questions I had. Not all the answers made a lot, made sense to me, and maybe, maybe it's best with Mr. Janino not here, then maybe I follow up with him directly on some of them.
Sure, if you would like, you could write another email to me with your concerns, and I will, or you can write directly to Mr. Janino.
Okay.
Sure.
Well, I'll direct it to both of you, but-
Okay.
If, I just got to, if there's a couple of high-level questions I could ask, we might have to defer to Mr. Janino, I don't know, but the, on the revenue side, there were, there's about $150,000 of revenue increases in the budget, and I was just curious how confident we are in some of these numbers. Like, one of them, it says state and federal aid, and it's, it's, it's an $80,000 increase, and I just, is that something that, are those numbers that we know we're definitely getting because the state and federal budgets have earmarked those for suffering, or are those estimates? Do you, do you-
I would, I would right now just say, let's, let's put it together, and we'll get it to Mr. Janino and myself, and we'll take a look at it.
Okay.
I don't have the budget in front of me at all.
All right, that's fine. And then, okay, I'll, I'll save those, I'll save those for him. And then, on the, on the St. Lawrence indictment, you know, it, it stands to reason that our, our debt risk as being part of the town of Ramapo has, has gone up, as, as we know that there's going to be rocks turned over and ugly things living underneath them. You know, I think the, the opportunity increases for us to benefit greater by becoming a city.
I think Mr. Morris has a, has a response to that.
As you know, we sent out to several universities asking for their help. This is not a cheap undertaking. To look at this in the way it has to be looked at would have cost the village tens of thousands of dollars. Two colleges turned us down. We were finally able to, just this past week, we had a teleconference with West Point. West Point, they have various classes who take on real-life projects. Speaking to the Colonel in charge of the Educational Department there, they've agreed to take on our project. We've already started with them. We forwarded them some information, and- already started with them, we forwarded them some information, and if, their class will start in August. At that time, the class will be given this assignment, and it should be completed by December. And they'll issue a full report as to feasibility of doing it, the, the practical impact, the cost, et cetera, et cetera. So, it, it has been accepted, it's in the works, and we'll have a report by December.
Okay, that's, that's good news. You know, regardless of whether it's tens of thousands of dollars, or, I mean, we're, we're paying Ramapo about $600,000 a year for their debt. That doesn't ever go down, it seems to be going up, and like I said, after we turn over these rocks, there's gonna be even more. So, you know, tens of thousands of dollars is, is a one-time investment. I mean, it's great that we can find another avenue to possibly not have to spend that, but we are, you know, it's, the meter on this thing is spinning out of control every, every day we, we stay part of, part of the town of Ramapo. And like I said, the debt's not going down, it keeps going up, and now, and now with all these corrupt findings that we're gonna, that are gonna continue to be uncovered, that number's just gonna get higher and higher for us. And, you know, we've got our own debt to, to figure out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Michael Curley, 84 on Javon, you know, I just wanna get back to that Orange and Rockland point with the, I understand, you can't hear that, okay?
No, you can say it.
The part that, the part that the main thing is that all the land is gonna be, all the dirt that's gonna be disrupted at that point, and what other saying may be there, water and whatnot. And as we all know, if you go in your own backyard, and you take a couple of shovels, and you, and you dig up your backyard, and as these gentlemen were talking how water travels, okay, I think, I think by testing something on it, they said they would test every week, okay? I think by testing something every week is a little bit too far away. If you test on a Tuesday, and something happens on a Wednesday, you're not gonna find out for another week, maybe. I think that's a little, little crazy to do, right, with everything we know that's going on in the country right now, right? With all the different, different things and all, and all the water damage. So, I respectfully request that maybe you ask them, or get them to see if they would test a little more often, and give us those, and with the, the day of the computer, and the day of Twitter and everything else, give us those results almost instantly, okay? As we know, because it just being safety, it's just one of those safety issues I really feel strong about, right? And, and, and it's, it shouldn't be unreasonable for them to do. Like she said, the land has been, they've been testing for years and nothing's changed, but the land hasn't been disrupted in years. There's a difference, that's the whole difference here. We're going there, everyone is taking shovels, taking dump trucks, taking tons of dirt out of there, but things are changing then. So because things are changing, just, I think it's reasonably responsible government to protect the water supply of the village of Suffolk. So that's all, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Will do. Anyone else from the public would like to speak? Hi, Carol.
From New York. I agree with him. I really think it should be more than just twice a week, maybe three times, because if there's a sudden rain or something happens, and it moves, and they're not there testing it, and also that the equipment is adequate, and that they have generators. I didn't hear anybody mention generators. If there's, we're always having power problems with storms and stuff, and they should have emergency on-site, not that they have to bring it in, so that if they need to kick in and get it started, they got the generators right there for whatever. The other thing I wanted to mention is Wayne Avenue. There is a short site distance when you come down off Pavilion and make your turn onto Wayne, either direction, and the cars come down past Craig's house, and they fly. You can't see them until you're pulling out into the road. There are three lanes, not two lanes, on, under the bridge. The one lane is the left-turn lane onto Washington. There's the straight-through lane, there are no arrows. The outside lane, the one closest to Pavilion, they need that lane for the cars coming out of Pavilion to make that right turn, because they can't go from zero to 60 in three seconds. And when those cars come flying down, they need the room for the slow lane to merge into the main lane. You need to indicate that with arrows, so that...
That's what we were talking about, the, the pavement markings, that we'll be discussing that with the DOT.
And then going in the opposite direction towards Lake Antrim, when you come off Washington Avenue. If you're going to make a left turn onto Pavilion, you've got hash marks in your way. You've got the straight-through lane, and to get over there and to get in, people come flying up Wayne Avenue, blaring their horn at you, and you hardly have time to get over, and you're not supposed to drive on hash marks. That's a violation.
We're gonna have, we're gonna have the Suffolk Police Department come up and do some more enforcement up there. They've been doing a lot of enforcement up there, Carol.
No, 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 no.
Right, every day they're up there. But we do need the pavement markings.
Pavement markings, yes. Change the hash marks.
They won't change the speed limit, we tried that.
But maybe they'll allow you to change the hash marks to left-turn arrows for the cars going up.
We'd have to explore that. There's requirements and regulations with the state on road marking, so that's something that we'll have to explore.
Right, because you've got increased traffic now with the increased building and residents up there.
Oh, I understand that, I know, this is an issue.
So you really need to allow for that little extra few feet.
Right.
For left-turn arrows, and do away the hash marks for the cars, have a safe place to get off to the side from the guys going through, without getting rear-ended.
Thank you, Carol. I have it.
All right. That's it.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
Sure, go ahead.
Joe Maraglino, 65 Wayne Avenue. One of the best things, and I think I mentioned it, about the same issue she was talking about, with Wayne Avenue with the two lanes and all of that, coming from Pavilion Road. One of the best things I could think of is to scare them, and then a way to scare them is to put up one of them speed limit signs that's radar-detected. Believe me, they see that ding light up, they're gonna slow down, even if they leave two lanes under that bridge. They see the things light up, I seen it. I work for the thruway. They flash.
Is there somewhere we can look into that, Chief, or, or Mr. Zawicki?
Well, ma'am, we have, we have, we have a big rail trail, which is terrible. They do make permanent ones.
Right.
To fix the wall, or, and they have a satellite demand, and, and, which is a very tight road.
Is that something that would be regulated by the state for us to put up that type of signage?
It's technically a state road, but I would, I would, I don't want to forget how much, it's really not, it's really just a warning, it's not, you can't make a forceful sign, sign right, I mean, they probably, as you said, but I would see that being found at the turn. It shouldn't be, but if you could get permanent ones, I know that, if I look into them in the bell, to put them on certain roads and...
We need power, right? You need power, you need electricity.
Power, or, or, I can research more, I, I need a call.
I have a slower bus.
Okay. I have a call, but I'm looking at...
All right, would you follow up on that, please?
I'm looking for, 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 for whatever reason, for, 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 it's not, no, definitely looking at it. In the meantime, if you put a radar trail, okay, and we usually put a little fall of the city, so we can put a fall test, but that's...
Okay, so we'll take a look at that this week.
Joe, absolutely, Joe, just keep coming down, it's like, that's what I'm saying.
Either way, sometimes, but coming from, you know, Pavilion Road, they see the two lanes, and they're putting each other...
Yeah, we, we just saw a rail path, yeah, we did that, yeah.
Great, thank you.
The reason, I'm, I'm sorry to keep mentioning this, because, hey, last year, we had a fatality there, okay? I don't wanna see that no more. I mean, the police department's seen it, everybody's seen it. My babysitter got struck by the car, she died. I don't wanna see that no more. That's why I push so hard to see it. It's a quality of life thing. Sidewalks, the repaving, the markings, I don't care what cars, I mean, you gotta do something. I try to be...
Trying.
Yeah, I understand, and I, I appreciate the time. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Carol, I was just thinking about his lights, the lights under the thruway, overpass. Who's responsible for those lights? Us, the thruway, the state?
We actually just repaired them.
All right, the village is responsible for the lights?
Charles, do we know the exact, who's exactly responsible for those lights?
Unfortunately, we are.
We are.
The ones on the wall will put you in danger, doing all that.
Right. We're working under the underpass.
Yeah.
All right.
I just had to ask.
There you go, Carol. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Now, let's see, where are we?
Village Clerk.
Village Clerk.
I have the minutes, Mayor. It's the regular board meeting on March the 7th, 2016.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 7th, 2016, at a, a regular village board meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's it.
Yeah, sure. Next, we have a resolution for the mayor to sign an agreement with CompuTel Consultants for Audit, Utility Auditing Services. Mr. Freshhour.
Okay. With the exception of Orange and Rockland Utilities, very often, when a municipality has franchise agreements, let's say with FiOS, or Verizon, or Cablevision, they get cute with the accurate numbers that they supply and the payments that they make to municipalities. What this company does is they do a full-blown audit of all of the franchise agreements and what's called the utilities' gross receipts taxes. And if there's, if they're not successful, it costs nothing. If they are successful, they get a one-time 30% fee for any refund, refunds after the village was to actually receive any such payment. So, this resolution is to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with CompuTel in a form approved by the village attorney.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Okay, next resolution for your consideration is a resolution authorizing the village treasurer to make year-end budget adjustments. And the way it originally was drafted, it made it so that the board was going to just be given a copy of whatever adjustments were made to the year-end budget. I changed this resolution only upon prior approval of the village board. I think it's very important to have oversight, and, you know, this board is fiscally responsible for making sure that the budgets are accurate, as we may have read in some other places. It wasn't apparently the case. So, this authorizes him to make the adjustments, but only upon prior approval of the village board.
And that's just maintaining the control of the, the changes by the board?
Correct.
Do I have, do I have a motion for the resolution authorizing the village treasurer to make the year-end budget adjustments?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Next, I have a resolution in front of me establishing the 2016-2017 parking fees for municipal parking lots in the village of Suffolk. This will include a non-resident fee and a resident fee. This is pursuant to Article 5 of Section 255 of the Code of the Village of Suffolk, parking permits and required to park in municipal parking areas. So therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Suffolk hereby establishes parking fees plus applicable sales tax for 2016-2017 to run from June 1st, 2016, to May 31st, 2016, 2017. This will coincide with our current fiscal budget year, as it did not coincide with our budget years when it was under the parking authority. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, do I have any, any further from the board? Any of the trustees?
I just wanna make a statement. I just, I wanna thank everybody that supported the farmer's market on May 7th, and I hope we have another good season this year. It's every Saturday until, I believe, the middle of November. So I just wanna thank the village for supporting it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? No, at this time?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Have a safe and happy week.